Okay, our first order of business, Jeremy here saying the aviation department needing to replace Greg on the board with John Haley, correct?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. So I just want to make the recommendation that we replace Greg with John. That's my recommendation.
Okay, have a motion to accept that recommendation?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
You, thanks.
Thank you.
And, you know.
Morning. You guys know we got awarded the 2022 Community Crossings Grant. Need to designate the signing president, Chuck Signe. Crossing.
Okay, we had done this for the bridge contract, need to extend it on to this community crossing grant, so we would need a motion to make me that designated signee.
Yeah, so moved.
No discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye. Go again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan?
Morning.
Morning.
First things first, the last week at the joint session opened the quotes for the roof out here and the bids for the work release facility. I'll start with the highway garage. We received two quotations, Creekside Coatings and Roofing at $204,000 and Ton and Blank Construction at $211,320. In addition to posting the notice and relevant documents on the county's website sharing on Facebook page, I sent direct requests for quotations to four local contractors in Ton and Blank. Mr. Kruger sent one to Creekside. These are the only two firms that responded. Creekside is obviously the apparent little bit quoter. However, it is not clear that Creekside meets the requirements for most responsive and responsible bidder on the project. As you will see in your packets, they did not complete the itemized cost break down included in the bid document or submit the required certified check or bidder's bond, both of which Ton and Blank provided. Additionally, based on conversations that both architect Matt Iarton and I had with Levi Schwartz of Creekside, neither of us is certain that the submitted bid is an accurate reflection of the true cost of the work. Mr. Schwartz had reservations about his ability to manage one part of the project, leaving both of us unconvinced. I've asked Dave to stick around just in case he has anything to offer. It's scary he's not in here. Mr. Kruger had had Creekside do previous work for the county and was content with it, and that's why he had submitted, sent the documentation to him. But I think it would be advisable to take any insights from Highway into consideration before you make a decision, but based on what we have seen, Mr. Iarton and I both feel that Ton and Blank is better equipped to complete the project within budget. Dave, have anything that you want? Terry feels the same. Okay. I know there have been concerns about where the quotes actually came in versus where we had expected them to. I am not an expert on building materials and labor matters, but what I do know is that these two contractors are vastly different in size, in typical scope of projects they do, and in geographic markets. And so if the two of them came in this close together, I'm inclined to believe that they're fairly reasonable numbers based on where the markets are right now. We've started to see fuel prices finally start coming down at the pump. Whether that will translate into a decline in prices for oil-based materials in the near future, I don't know, nor do I know if any cost reductions like that might be offset by further increases to labor costs. You do have technically until early February to award this contract or to decline both quotations, but based on what we do know, as I said, Matt and I both think that Ton and Blank is the appropriate firm to receive the award.
Comments from the board?
I see no reason to wait. Also, doesn't appear that we're going to get it any less expensive in Ton and Blank's reputation here. I feel we go forward with it.
Well, just so you know, I mean Nathan has it right. You have to, you have to have reasons why you're choosing the higher bid, otherwise it is. But the re, as he pointed out, assessment of what's a reasonable and responsive bid, and if they didn't fill out everything that they were supposed to, that's a reason not to utilize them. Got in trouble with a smaller contractor on the Justice Center years and years ago who got our proof right. They weren't around to fix it when things went wrong, so it seems to me the responsible thing is to use Ton and Blank, but reiterating, there has to be some reason other than their reputation. I think what Nathan was pointing out, that he went through it, and they're, they're not exactly, they're not convinced, and with the architect's help, not convinced that their bid met the specifications, then I think it's reasonable to award it to Ton and Blank.
Oh, Laura, did I make enough of a motion there? Why don't we start over?
Did I catch you off? I apologize. Okay. Yeah. Maybe I should. Okay, so I would make a motion to go forward with Ton and Blank based on the other bid we received not being filled out to specifications, and I see no reason to wait till February. Let's get it on the schedule and go forward.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion? We were to reject this, Nathan, and what would be the rebid process?
It would be the same as we've done. I just would have to confirm what sort of timeline is required, if there's a delay we have to meet before we can put it back out or not. I don't know that, but when we, when we submit, put this out, we went through the direct solicitation process based on the expected cause, where it came out was above that threshold. You know, we made that in good faith based on the information we had, but we would have to go through the slightly more complex process of actually putting it in legal notices in the newspaper like we did for the work release the second time around, knowing now what we do now. But otherwise, it'd be the same. We put it in, do a site visit, get them, we'd open them, take them under advisement. Same thing.
What was our expected?
Maxing out around 140 or 150. Now, those were numbers we got eight months, six months ago, eight months ago at this point, between the time that we actually got those estimates and we were ready to proceed with advertising, waiting for the very last minute in the bid period before they actually submit, which apparently is what everybody does, I've learned. But yeah, so it was substantially over where we had expected eight months.
The other problem I see is lack of interest of local contractors.
I could have pressed on more of them than the ones I did, but like I said, we did submit to four, we requested directly from four of them in addition to pushing it on our Facebook page, so it's not as if local contractors were kept in. The one that I did follow up with said that they were interested in the work release project, but not in this.
Any other discussion? Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those.
Great, thank you. Moving on to work release, as you can probably guess, Matt and I are not ready to make a formal recommendation on a project of this scope as quickly. He, I've got a call scheduled with him this afternoon. He's been reviewing the bids and in contact with the three contractors that did submit, hoping to determine if there are any additional places where cost cuts could be made. Do you believe that he, working with me in the sheriff's office, trimmed just about everywhere where you might find substantial cost cutting, cost savings, but there might be a little bit more room if we take another look at some of the HVAC specifics, the grade of materials proposed for flooring. At said, these bids were only about $150,000 to $200,000 higher than where they came in when we had included this as an alternate on the original Justice Center project, and those numbers were just the subcontractor costs themselves, didn't reflect the additional costs that would have come with Ton and Blank's construction management services. So even though these are higher than I wish they were, they are not substantially higher than they were in early 20, early to mid 2021 when we had done the bids for the Justice Center primary construction project. As I noted last week, between rainy day and cumulative jail, we have the cash to pay for this as bid without operate, affecting general operating fund cash balances, whether you're comfortable doing that, whether the council will support that, I can't say. What I do believe, based on the conversations I've had with the sheriff's office, with our major employers, that this is a project that we either do right, don't cut corners, or we don't do it all if we want to see the effects that we have for the sheriff's department in terms of revenue, or the participating inmates in terms of the benefits getting them back into society and for our employees. Like with the highway project, you technically have until early February to award the contract or to decline the bids. As I noted earlier, as I hinted, this project was subject to the actual bid solicitation process where we had to put it in the local newspaper. We did that in addition to the website and Facebook. I did send it to one local firm that I felt had the capacity to do it. That was beyond what the law required. They said they were interested but did not submit. As you can see, based on how the trades work, if the companies that track these sorts of things, three firms, none of which are local, all found out about this project, chose to bid on it, Ton and Blank, who obviously have done a lot of workforce, we're aware of it, chose not to bid on this one. Don't know if a rebid process would bring much lower rates, maybe a couple of local contractors we could hit up and try again. That's where we stand with it. It's higher than I would have liked, but not substantially higher than where it came in the last time we did this, and we had spent a lot of time updating the original architects' plans, working with the sheriff's office to make sure that we weren't increasing costs unnecessarily with concrete block walls because work release facility doesn't have to meet the same security standards that general population cell blocks. So there was already quite a bit of trimming to make sure that we weren't overbuilding it, but trying to make a facility for, I think it came in at 32 beds, training facilities, enough bathroom and shower fixtures to meet the code, security provisions, et cetera, that's where we came out.
Do you have a drawn explosive workout in your office?
On the website and at my office. And they could also request through a third-party engineering firm if they wanted copies printed at larger scale than what I can print in my office.
I guess it's my feeling we're spending a little more time trying to bring the costs down since there's no hurry to getting it done. I mean, it's not the program that we're not in favor of, it's just the fact that no matter what the project is, everything just keeps going up, it seems like, so maybe some division of local contractors could bring it down as well with this comments.
Could we use any inmates to help a local contractor?
I don't have an answer to that offhand. All I know for certain is that the code does have some pretty specific breakdowns about using your own internal labor, let alone free labor like that, versus putting it out for direct quotation solicitation versus bid process based on the cost of the project or the anticipated cost. I will look into that and see what sort of alternatives are available. That's what I know offhand.
Is this a right on wage?
I don't think, it's, I don't think it's subject to failing wage unless the contractor, based on union contracts, is doing it themselves, because there are no federal funds involved, but we're still subject to the firms being able to meet certain qualifications as far as everything from training programs to drug-free workplace programs, that sort of, and of course, simply being able to meet the work, scope of work. When I said we're not ready, Matt and I aren't comfortable making a recommendation at this point anyway, so I think Chuck's right for you to keep it, continue taking under advisement. Let us see what additional options we can find and then see if we think this is the best it's going to get, or if it's worth rebidding.
So I'd make a motion to table this. Still, further discussion, further data comes in?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Like I said, I have a conversation with Matt this afternoon, so we'll keep working on that. I will go fairly quickly through the two other construction projects. The Justice Center, I am quite pleased to report that Ton and Blank is going to be on site today, if they aren't already, installing four of the five last doors, all of which are upstairs either in or near the circuit court offices. And then the hardware company will be here on Monday, or on Wednesday, I'm sorry, to do their work. Some of them have some electric controls in them for push-button access. The only door that isn't here yet is the one that is of lowest priority. It's a replacement door paid for by our moving company's insurance for some damage that they had done to it. It's a closet storage room door in an office, in an office, so it's not seen very often, and the damage is actually pretty minor, but the moving company owner felt it was appropriate to submit it. So that is the only one that is delayed, and like I said, it's important. I had hoped to have a firm answer today on the ongoing cost of HVAC noise, and I was overly optimistic. The subcontractor had identified a potential solution that would have been unintrusive. The architects' MEP consultants remoted in and implemented that solution, but it did not do the trick, so now we're afraid that more invasive sheet metal work is going to have to happen. What is clear at this point, after a couple of very direct emails that I had to send and that our construction manager, senior project manager had to send, is that the architects and/or the MEP consultants, they messed up when we rushed them to change the plans in that upper level area, restructuring the waiting room to give it more room and realigning some of those office spaces. They did not draw plans that would allow for enough airflow to be dispersed properly in that area. That part we noted. What has recently come to light is that one or more of the employees of the subcontractor working on this part of the project recognized that there would be a noise issue and failed to submit an RFI or otherwise to bring this to anyone's attention until after the fact, when we started seeing the noise problem and had some weird shutdown problem. So design was faulty, somebody knew it was faulty and didn't do anything about it. They're still arguing over who's going to pay what percentage of the cost to fix whatever the final solution is. That's why Ton and Blank still hasn't submitted their last bill, and I haven't paid the architect's last bill. They're both at fault. The architects have been more forthcoming in acknowledging their guiltiness than the subcontractor has. As I said, Ton and Blank has sent some pretty direct emails to the subcontractor and gotten pretty wishy-washy responses. I'm going to have to work with Ton and Blank to investigate what our options are for ensuring that we're not on the hook for a problem that obviously was not our fault. But we at least are on the right path in finally getting a solution. It's just a matter of who's going to share what part of the cost to fix the problem that both parties bear full of.
Those types of situations are incredibly difficult to deal with with what they've been having. The best hope is that we see if they follow through with repair. If they don't, then we'll go another round.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think if we get to the point where they just won't complete the repair, we put a mechanic's lien on someone, but even that, knowing what we know, might be a difficult thing to sort.
Right, the mechanics lien, that works every day. Put on our.
So is there a, other than just holding the invoice, is there a owner's mirror to a mechanic's lien to?
Help me just have some for repair to meet the requisite level of expertise?
Yeah, I would call it quality of service, sold wasn't delivered.
Like I said, we'll continue working on that. Ton and Blank has been a very good ally in this process, but that's only gotten us so far. One other thing, or I'm sorry, that's, that's all unless you have any questions, further questions on the Justice Center and I'll dive in the courthouse quickly. Continuing to work with the architects' steering committee and the affected office holders on finalizing some space assignments and addressing furniture needs. Unfortunately, the downside of this very inclusive process is that delayed responses from committee members and department heads can have a noticeable effect on delaying progress, so things are moving a bit more slowly at this point than I would prefer. On the upside, I think that we have reached a pretty good tentative plan for converting the courtroom into a meeting space that not only will provide a much more pleasant and acoustically friendlier, long-term meeting space than we currently have, but will also allow us to preserve a number of historically significant pieces with a little bit of restoration and restaining work so that some of them match a little. Architects are looking into that, but I think we've got an answer there, pretty happy about that. Like I said, it's just a matter of getting to a point where we tell department heads and steering committees, they need answers or decisions will be made without them, which is not something that I really think any of us want to have if we can avoid. John Allen, our superintendent from the Justice Center, was down last week, couple of days, and he did some exploratory demolition work, taking apart some windows in a couple of places to see exactly what the building material situation behind them is, the quality. And he also removed some of the layers of carpeting and underlayment in the courtroom and found some pretty decent-looking hardwood still in place deep underneath all. Any questions on the courthouse process?
Something related, I just, since Terry's here, I wanted to ask her if you had any contact with the State Department yet on our boxes?
Yes, I left a very connected to the conference room, and they were having a meeting this morning. Their whole team is having a meeting this morning, which was directly today.
Great.
And then one other thing, I don't need a decision from you immediately, but something I would like you to take into consideration and get back to me soon on, is whether we want the architects to plan for a complete fire suppression system in the courthouse with sprinklers and/or foam, depending on the spaces, just a fire alarm system or bolt. Obviously, sprinkler system's going to be costlier than just the alarm system. There's some flexibility we have because of the historic nature of the building, but also obviously, we want to take into consideration preservation of a building we're putting this kind of money into. So if the three of you could contemplate that and get back to me, I can make a recommendation to the commission, to the architect on that as they're continuing to do the job.
Do you have a cost difference?
Not offhand, but I can see if Matt has anything.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, and then last thing I've got for you, CDC restructuring, two parts on that, the general reorganization. I finally have the confirmation needed that the proposed bylaws restructuring of the CDC to serve as sort of a centralized governing committee with representation from all the statutory commissions is workable as long as we're careful in updating the bylaws to make sure that the CDC isn't responsible for any decisions that overstep the bounds, step on the toes of the statutory responsibilities of those individual commissions. Normally, these commissions, Economic Development Commission, Redevelopment Commission, start with new terms filled in January. Taking our, we'll be taking our time, obviously, to make sure that in restructuring the CDC and setting these ordinances up, filling them, we don't miss any statutory requirements, don't overstep anything. I can't say then that we won't, it won't be January of next of 24 if we're actually ready to implement, depending on what sort of flexibility are, there is with those terms. Some of it may also depend on program needs. If the housing program we're working on, you know, if it suddenly accelerates and we need to get some things in place, we might have to do that, otherwise, we will probably stick with January 24 and not have any weird, unclean issues with terms, seats, that sort of. And then last week, you know, the council was not ready to consider implementing an innkeeper's tax, which is required in order for a formal tourism commission. I would like for the commissioners to consider giving me the go-ahead to set up what we'll call a tourism advisory committee under resolution rather than county ordinance, so that at least for as long as we don't have an innkeeper's tax and a formal tourism commission, I'm able to assemble a group of more than one or two tourism, tourism supporting industry partners who can bring their expertise to the table in helping my office to determine how to prioritize our marketing budget and any sort of tourism-related programming that we undertake. The resolution, we would structure as closely to a tourism commission ordinance as possible, with the obvious exception that they wouldn't have any say in budgeting tax revenues that don't exist.
Oh, give an example of who you would bring in to?
So it might be somebody from the state park or one of the fish and wildlife areas. It might be the orchard south of Francisville. It might be one or both of the canoe and kayak liveries. It might be somebody from a restaurant or grocery store or the movie theater. Anybody like that whose businesses either are directly supported primarily by visitors from out of county or that benefit from that additional traffic, people coming to Sanders to pick up, you know, smores to take out to the campground, campgrounds themselves, those sorts of businesses.
Sandhill Cream visitors?
What's that?
Sandhill Cream?
Yep, so we might have somebody from Dassault-Palaski, we might have one or two of the bed and breakfasts, an Airbnb operator. Unlike some of the other commissions where the state law says you have to have three or five or seven, all the law says on a tourism commission is you have to have an odd number, and it has, says that X percentage of them have to live in the county. Other than that, it's got a little more flexibility. We don't want to have like 15 members, one of the issues I'm trying to avoid by restructuring the CDC, but we have some flexibility to make sure that we have fair representation both of geographic parts of the county and different tourism and tourism supporting sites.
You're just wanting us to give a thumbs up on?
Thumbs up to work on setting up bylaws and a resolution to get that going.
And we would come back and officially approve that then?
Yep.
I think we can go ahead with it.
Oh, thank you. That's all I have unless you have any more questions for me.
Going back to the courthouse?
Yes.
And establishing these office areas and so on, as the steering committee came up with a recommendation that you guys need support on from us so we can get this moving.
Um, largely yes. Some of the upstairs office spaces, we're still hashing out. Some of the upstairs office spaces, we're still hashing out the division to be the most efficient and effective with the use of space. The main level is pretty much set in stone and the lower level is set in stone. We've just had a little bit of resistance from some departments about spaces to which they sign.
But when you get something firm that you need support, backing on, bring it to the table.
Do that, thank you.
Anything else for Nathan? Hey. Anyone here from the proclamation? So, uh, assuming that so we can move forward with advertising our calendar, that is a dead issue here, we have to get that advertised, right Laura? So, uh, my recommendation is that we leave our calendar as is and, uh, we do not entertain a proclamation. Feeling the same way on that? Motion on a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're down to other business and we need to sign claims and approve payroll number twenty-five.
Okay, I have looked at, uh, reviewed payroll twenty-five and I've reviewed the claims and I make a motion to approve as presented.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor say aye on the approval of the claims and payroll twenty-five.
Aye.
Proven, signed the December fifth regular minutes.
Hey, I've reviewed those, uh, December fifth regular minutes and I make a motion to approve as presented.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have some documents that need to be approved and signed. CSI for the recorder's office. Maintenance agreement. Need a motion to approve.
I would, uh, so move.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we have the, uh, flexible cash rent agreement with, uh, Tim Alexander. Pretty much status quo from last year. Reese has been working with him as usual on that.
So I would make a motion to approve that lease with no changes?
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor on the, aye on the cash rent?
Aye.
Fire inspection system, Larry had given me two different quotes here, uh, Corzen, K-O-R, K-O-O-R-S-E-N, had a quote for twenty-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. And, uh, DFP Fire Systems had a quote for forty-six-five. I think Corzen is the one that installed the equipment. So we need a motion to approve one of these two, uh, contractors.
Did Larry have a recommendation?
Yes, most.
Okay. Yes. Make that motion to approve that one.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the Corzen Fire and Security contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Kevin had put together for us a permissive use agreement with the React people. Think that was sent out to you? Any comments on that, Kevin, or anything?
I've said it, see, I don't know if you had any comments on it. I, it's, uh, yeah, it's not a traditional lease, it's a agreement for permissive use. You can allow them to use your building and under the terms that we set forth, which is basically that you, you, uh, steward of the property and, uh, don't mismanage it or tell us if there's a problem, otherwise, uh, they can use it. And, uh, you guys, if you need another use for it at any time, give a sixty-day notice and you can have that. And it doesn't need to be renewed year over year, just leave it in place until such time as you or another board decides that you need that property back.
I think we did ask that, uh, they ensure the contents of their building there as well. All in favor of this, uh, permissive use agreement with the React group? Need a motion?
Yeah, um, okay, so, so moved, I would make that motion. Approve that, I've viewed that lease.
Moved and seconded to approve this permissive use agreement with the React, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Appointments. We have been asked to approve that Wilder as Public Library Board member.
I would make, make a motion, approve Ben Wilder.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have two bonds, host mans with the, for one, he is soil and water, and Laura is our monitor. Motion to approve these two bonds.
I would make a motion to approve both of those bonds.
Moved and seconded, uh, Landwater was fifteen thousand, Landers thirty thousand. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Last item of business, the EMA position, it advertised, had about three people interested and only one chose to interview. Had no interviews for part-time person. So we have Rachel Fox, person that's being brought to us for hiring from the EMA Board.
I would make a motion to appoint Fox as the EMA Director.
Second, any other discussion? This would also move the ADM. Yes. Right. Yes. And this is basically, um, same areas that Sherry had covered as well, with the ADA that was covered in the interview, those areas as well. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The comments from the committee.
Crossings project with four bidders, they're not awarded to the lowest sounding.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.